Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bridgette Fitzstirles and I am the Economic Officer of Kerry County Council. I'm delighted to host this webinar today in association with Retail Excellence Ireland. I suppose we're aware of the many challenges that are facing the retail sector in the county and we decided to run a webinar in association with Retail Excellence Ireland to outline some of the challenges facing the retail sector and also some of the things that can be done to help you to enable your businesses to reopen in the near future. We also have Thomas Hayes, head of our local enterprise office, is one of our panelists as well. And Thomas will talk you through the various funding options and grant applications that are there within the local enterprise office. Jim Power, economist, has also joined us on the call today and he will talk through things from a more macro point of view in relation to the impact of COVID-19 on the economy. So now I would like to kick off the session first by asking David Spitzsimons to join us and David will talk through the various options from Retail Excellence Ireland. Thank you.
Thanks, Bridgette, and good afternoon, everyone. And thanks to Kerry County Council and the local enterprise office, specifically to Thomas and Bridgette, for organising today's webinar, which will be about an hour in length, so hopefully you find it useful. I suppose before we start, just want to say a big hello to everyone in Kerry. We miss you guys down there. We've got lots of members down there. And I want to personally thank the likes of Jim Garvey and Peter Hartley and those who worked through the pandemic and served the nation, and that was a really challenging period, so thanks, guys. I suppose on a personal front, I was in Lisbon on the 28th of February for a weekend with my wife and that's when I came across COVID-19 first. We were sitting in the time-out market, looking at deliveries coming in, looking at drivers with face masks and gloves, and I started kind of questioning what was going on, came home, started researching it and I suppose communicated to government the severity of what was about to happen. So we are trying to work with government and get things done. In fact, my colleague Jean McCabe is on a conference call with Minister Heather Humphreys as we speak. So look, let's kick off. Kealan, do you want to pop on there? So what I'm going to cover off is a brief update on where we are with rates, rent, stuff like that. Some macro trends that we see in retail which are impacting us all. New ways of retailing which are now fairly important. Assessing the impact of COVID on different sectors, obviously. You know, visitor-facing retailer is going to be impacted differently to fashion retailer. Some tips to assist you. Future likely demand in terms of revenues, then we're going to hand over to Thomas to talk about the LEO and local sports. Then Jim is going to finish up what Bridgette mentioned. So let's get off. Thanks, Kealan. So a brief update on matters. So I know something to pay rent. So we're pushing and working with government to introduce a rent grant for Ireland. It basically, the model we suggested was the 60/20/20 model, which is the government put up a grant of 60% of the rent, the landlord discounts 20% of the tenant, and the tenant pays 20% in rent. But I put into the slides, and by the way, we'll distribute these slides to everyone later today. So the Danish model is one the government are looking at at the moment, is one we like. It's not only a system for clothes, but it also assists those who remain open but lost money. So that's on rent. I suppose last Monday evening I had a conversation with the team of civil servants. And also, if you look at a government economic consideration document prepared and released on Friday, it says that a rent measure is required. On rates, we're pushing hard for a 12-month rate waiver. Three months has been announced. It's not long enough. And as you can see there, for tourism-facing retailers, they require at least 18 months rate waiver. So again, that's all today with Heather Humphreys. That's front and centre. Now, these are the views of Retail Excellence, not Kerry County Council. But if we want to support our visitor-facing retailers in destinations and pubs and hotels, it has to be 18 months. Nothing else will do. And finally, on liquidity, we can bang on about all the different brands and schemes and whatever. But ultimately, me, I'm working with John Moran, who's the ex Secretary General of Department of Finance, and I'm working with Izzy in the restaurants and lots of other people. And we have a very simple two-step liquidity solution. What is? Give every business a loan, whatever they want, interest-free, whatever, to pay your rates, pay your rent, pay everyone, pay your suppliers. Thus, local authorities function, your landlord functions, your supplier functions. And having paid everyone, then, you make a claim in step two to the revenue managed compensation scheme, where you make a claim for losses sustained during the period of COVID. You get your payout, your reward, and then you pay back your loan. And that way, every single dollar in the economy remains open. The local authority doesn't need a bailout, your landlord doesn't need a bailout, your suppliers don't need a bailout. So that's that. So that's a quick political update and such. Next, so trends, what are we looking at? Okay, the big trend we're seeing is homework is here to stay. So after the impact in Kerry, it's less so, but if you look at the bikes of COVID, of course, of Limerick, lots of workers who used to go into those cities to work will now remain at home in Nice or Benin or whatever. And they'll obviously connect more with the place that they live rather than the place that they work. They're going to work at home. So they will go downtown to Ennis or whatever. Instead of working in Shannon, they live in Ennis. They go down into Ennis and buy their pharmacy, their vouchers, their whatever. So potentially, the homeworking revolution is going to have a very negative impact on major urban areas, but a hugely positive impact on suburban and regional towns and locations. Number two, shopping is the world's most enjoyable attack time and social hobby, so we all know that. We all love afternoon shopping with the family, with our friends. So for the short term, we're going to see stores actively launching capacity limits and limits, actively talking about please reduce your dwell time, actively discouraging browsing. And I know there's a few questions in, but regarding product and touching product, we just need common sense here. So if you're an optician and customers are trying to gas, or if you're a jeweller and someone's picked up an item, you simply put them on a tray and you disinfect them and put them back out for sale. If you're a fashion retailer, potentially you might have a rail in the changing room. Anything that's tried on, not bought, is simply put on the rail. And if you have a steamer, that evening, you can steam the clothes to go back out and you're doing your very best to be safe. Look, so it's all about common sense. And look, retail and business in Ireland were ingenious, were resourceful to get through this. Okay, number three is new ways of retailing are emerging. I'll talk about that in a second. Next one is number four, one thing we're seeing in our lives, what's important to the family and whatever. But one of the things that seems to be very important to people as they repaint things is local business and S and E's and supporting local business. And the EY study proves that. So potentially, we may not have customers come out of the nation and be far more willing to support their local businesses. We very much hope that would be the case. Okay, another key thing, there's no weddings, no funerals, we've nowhere to go. So obviously, we're not dressing up for any time soon. So that's had a very negative impact on the laws of fashion and it'll continue to do so over the coming months. But look, most importantly, at the end of it all, we're all social creatures. And we may at some point return to amazing shopping experiences in Tilly, amazing hospitality experiences, and we will survive and we get through it. Okay. So new ways of retailing. So number one, we're going to see lots of retailers reopen Argo style. So you'll walk into the store, there might be a couple of meters space, but then the counter where there was never a counter before, and you will ask for the item. It's a bit like a 60 shopping here. And the colleague will run to get the item and they'll give it to you. So potentially, Snits Toys are going to open in the small store phase with an Argo style model where you walk up to the counter, ask for a board game or whatever it is. The colleague runs, gets it and brings it back. Obviously, there's no browsing, so it's very, very simple. Two, online is exponential. It's just going to grow like nuts and forever. So and Thomas will cover off in terms of the online supports that EI and the LEO have. But look, if you're not online, get online, even if you're a restaurant in terms of being able to potentially click and collect meals and such like. And next, we're going to see lots of different forms of online. So online with tele sales and chat solutions. So you go online to buy paint, what pops a colleague, do you want shirts? So you're now talking to the colleague online and you're asking them about how many tons of the paint do you need and what accessories do we need? And likewise, that can be prevalent for lots of consultants in retail areas like buying a pram or whatnot. So you need to consider that. Or even pure telling sales is here to stay. So what's that? You ring the shop, how are you doing? I need X, Y. And said, great, I've clicked and collected. Or I'm sorry, here's the credit card number. I'll be around to collect it. Or in fact, we use delivery. Okay, the next one, and this is going to be huge, is reservation-only or appointment-only retailing. So what is that? And you'll see on the presentation, squareup.com, which is a free appointment software that you can use today. So basically, you're going to have lots of customers who are feeling unsafe. There's about 25% of the population who are elderly, who have under nine issues. They're not going to be queuing outside pennies in Tilly, I kid you not. They're scared. So what we might do is Billy Nolan might reopen Hilser's from 10 to 6:00 for everyone and he'll have maximum capacity levels and all that stuff. But from 6:00 to 8:00, Billy might have a reservation-only appointment service whereby you book a half an hour with Billy and you're online and you tell Billy what you're going to buy and you potentially tell Billy what your budget is. And Billy's standing at the door at 7:00 PM tomorrow to welcome Mary Murphy and say, thanks, Mary. Welcome, you know, you're appointed now and welcome to our personal shopping experience. So reservation is going to be huge. And next, dry treat. So my colleagues have reopened six stores today. They're kind of worried about what's going to happen. Excuse me, they'll be fine. So if you have a car park, like the car park at the back of Garvey's or whatever, potentially you could mark off some bays and you could have them, you could have click and collect. So yeah, great, here's the order and you text them back, come and collect it at 2:00 PM. Park in bay two, they park in bay two, we open their booth, bring the product out and they drive off. That's it. We don't even interact socially at all. Next is open-air retailing. So in all Kerry County Council and all County Councils are getting potentially updated advice around retailing outside of your shop, being able to, you know, put furniture and fixtures and whatever outside the store. So that's going to be something we'll see a lot of in the short term. And then finally, AIB have launched a pay-by-text option, which is very good. So no more off the phone. You simply text the credit card and advance and it's done. That's some new things to consider in retail today. So we'll hop onto the next one. Just to prove the Argo style model and just to show you visually, that's how Lush have reopened in the UK. So look, there's no product in front of the colleagues. You go up, you stand on the X, you ask for the item and they get it and give it to you and you're paying. And that's in the short term how some retailers will open. So it is quite amazing to see that because obviously Lush is a highly sensual, tech-driven, beautiful, packaged, beautiful retailing experience, but that's for the short term. Okay. Down the road from me, I have Ronan Mulligan in Waterford, who you believe he's the only dry treat pharmacy in Ireland. What foresight, he obviously knew about COVID-19 a couple of years ago when he opened this and it's making the point by dry treat. So this is obviously a full-time fixture and it's really busy and has been for COVID. But if you have a bit of space beside your store, if you have a couple of spaces in front of your store, you potentially can do dry treat by simply asking them to park open a marked bay and drive off again. Okay. Thanks, Kealan. So very hard to, I suppose, understand exactly how COVID is going to impact everyone. But if you look at the Y-axis there, it has long time to recover versus short time. And then in the bottom axis, it has the needs to adapt or otherwise. So as you can see, on the top left, we have tourism dependence and that, they're going to take a long time to recover. And the reason they don't have to adapt hugely is because by the time they're busy again, they'll probably have a vaccine and they won't need to adapt. If you look over on the right there, entertainment such as cinema, obviously they're going to take a few months to recover and they're going to reopen in phase five and obviously they need to adapt. So talking to Mark Anderson, Omnis Flex, these kind of guys, you know, social distancing, a third capacity, a reduction by 60% of the number of fill-in shows, you know, a crossover in the lobby area, people coming, moving. The majority are down in the bottom left there, as you can see. So we're all going to take a little bit of time to recover and we're all going to have to adapt a little bit. So if you walk, you can see H Canister, Garvey's, you see that. You know exactly what a dutch should kind of mean in the context of pharmacy. And so, so next. Okay, so I choose more slides and then we'll be handing over to Thomas. Okay, so just a couple of bits of advice. Large stores can reopen a small store by closing off some of the space. Do we have a definition of what a small store is? No. Do we want one? Not really. So it's about 400 square meters to 600 square meters across Europe. So you might have a big store, but you might decide, you know something, I'm going to close off half of it at the back there and we reopen on the 8th of June as a small store and we get back to business. And number two, retailers, some will need to reconsider what they sell. So I'm sorry, but you know, if souvenir trinket shops in Kerry today, they fundamentally know that there's coming. So potentially, they need to look to spot old mares or do something differently. Restaurants also need to look at what they're doing. So you know, restaurants need to consider, should we change your menu to be more takeout oriented? So if you look at our breed in Macarthur, which is a garden centre, they open on Monday, they're going to reopen the restaurants in phase three or four. They're going to have half the seating, obviously because of distancing. So what they're considering is knocking through the wall at the back of the kitchen, entering to the car park and having a dry treat takeout. And that's the kind of innovation thinking we need to have. So a restaurant that has conventional sit-down carpentry bins potentially might need to start thinking about selling stuff that's really easy to take out. They might look at doing bins, it means a wheel in terms of offering their menu every day and having a van driver getting out and delivering it to people, food, he's opening a microwave and such like. Okay, next is online virtual, like we considered. So what is that? Take a video of your store, pull it online and allow customers to have a look into your merchandise. So the customer will look at the video, the applause of a certain category of products that say, oh yeah, they do have a 100mm size. Great, I'll put that in my basket. So while they might need to come to the store today, they can see the store today. And again, after you open, and most of Kerry will open on the 8th of June, you know, we can still offer this service and try and make some money. Consider next, selling through social media platforms to different markets and such like. Next, we're going to have to remove fixtures potentially to make more space for distancing. So in the short term, we might have to take a few gondolas out, a few fixtures out to make space. And sorry, the marketplace point again there, look at eBay, but there's loads. Bezu, CEO of Bezu, it's actually last night, it's a really old independent fashion marketplace, that's what they're in. The open-air piece again is going to be prevalent. Now, I don't want to be contentious, but pedestrianisation in the short term is about to sweep across Ireland. So I live in Ennis, we're shutting down all of our main streets and for good reason. And it doesn't matter if you're for or anti-pedestrianisation in the short term, we need it because the paths are too narrow. And so that will also potentially allow retailers, now that we have the space outside the streets, will allow retailers potentially come out and have some product out in the street available to customers. And finally, the last point I make is communicate is so important. So we need to get our colleagues back safely, we need to get our customers back safely. So we need big posters on our windows saying, we're thrilled to be back open, you're very welcome. Our capacity number is five in the store. We would recommend a dwell time of half an hour, just so we can get to as many customers and to be fair to everyone. We've taken all steps to be as safe as possible. You know, you might mention about sanitisation of products that have been touched. And that's it. And you welcome them back. And look, you've never been in COVID or seen COVID before. You know, we're all good people and decent people and we're just going to do our best. But if you listen to what the garden centres, and I'm sure Barry Seedy is saying, if you listen to what the garden centres and DIY stores said on Monday, they said it was emotionally brilliant. They said they were applauded by customers and they came through the threshold. It was an incredibly positive day. So look, count down to the 8th of June for most of you and you really look forward to getting back to business. Last point, what kind of demand are we facing? So we talked to global retailers like Zara and Fung Fung and people like that. And we're going to see a pent-up demand phase. It's going to be about three or four weeks where people come in and they've kind of shopping lists. They've shot really functionally, there's no browsing. Everyone who comes to the store buys and they know exactly what they're getting. And you're going to see particularly high basket values, okay? And the DIY garden centres, so I'm sure when fashion reopens, it's going to be lots of demand and all that stuff. The next phase, unfortunately, after that pent-up demand phase, we're calling it the subdued demand phase. So if you look at, if you look at global retailers today, in Europe, they're going through their latter part of pent-up demand. In Asia, they're in subdued demand phase. And what happens is we can say a fall off by about 20 to 40%. Now, as Jim will tell us, that's the point from which we recover. So look, this isn't forever. And I suppose, I'm just conscious that I'm talking to Kerry businesses here. The worst impacted regions unfortunately in the EU today are micro economies that are very dependent on tourism. So if you talk to global retailers who have shops in Paris, Florence, Venice, those markets are really struggling and the whole of the retail industry, the business in those cities is down 60, 80%. So we desperately need our government support to help the likes of Kerry and Mayo and Clare where I live and other counties who are going to really struggle. And I know from stopping to Bridgette that the support, Bridgette last week looking at the loss to the Kerry economy of a billion this year alone for COVID, so you need central government support. So look, that's me, I think, we're going to hand back over, sorry, there's just some, I know some members have joined as well. That's our free HR, our free legal, so if you need help, those guys, but look, just call us. My team and I are more than able to help any business we can. So that's it. Thank you. Let's get back to business. Okay, great. Over to Thomas.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I'm very pleased to join you this afternoon to give some information in relation to Kerry County Council and some of the supports that are available to the local enterprise office and I suppose wider supports. Firstly, I'd just like to point people to the Kerry County Council helpline, 1-800-807-102, business dot support at kerrycoco.ie. And again, the helpline is there to assist businesses who have made queries, direct them to the appropriate sources of information and the appropriate agencies and so on. I suppose the helpline also and the unit behind the helpline, there's an Economic Recovery Group within Kerry County Council. And again, there are a couple of interesting initiatives on course there. One, for example, is obviously the Business Support Helpline. There's the Open Business Initiative. Again, we need to be out there, we need to be telling people that we are open for business within the county, all those smaller businesses out there need to be telling the story that they are open. And again, there's facility, an online facility which supports that, which allows businesses register, allows people to tell the public that they're open for business. And again, those businesses can register this fact on the Kerry County Council website and on the Twitter feed. And the third action I just mentioned there is the Kerry County Council website itself. Again, quite a bit of information has been posted on the site in relation to supports around business, in relation to the ongoing work of Kerry County Council and I suppose highlighting some of the supports and linkages elsewhere. It focuses on the presentation of webinars, recorded webinars and various sources of good and solid information. And another point of information here is the, it's helping your business respond to COVID-19. Again, it's a comprehensive list outlining the various supports in a simple format. And again, it's available to the localenterprise.ie kerry site. Thanks, Kealan. I suppose a number of weeks ago, I suppose, when all this kicked off, just to give an idea in terms of what we were dealing with, I suppose the local enterprise office, Kerry County Council, the business helpline, again, quite a number of businesses were back. I suppose the priority at that stage was looking at pandemic payments, with subsidy payments. Obviously, people very fearful in terms of their finances, taking the practical steps in terms of talking to their banks, talking to their debtors and creditors sensibly and putting schemes in place just to reduce their outgoings. And of course, this has changed over the last couple of weeks, again, as people are moving forward. They're looking at how do they open their businesses, they are looking at issues such as remote working. Kealan, you can move forward. Remote working. And again, looking at things like agile workplace adaptation, for example, there's a programme there. It's a scheme we operate. It is lean for micro, it looks at improving efficiencies within micro businesses and so on. And again, I suppose this has moved a lot of our own activity online. We've had to adapt and we've had to change in terms of how we operate moving forward also. Thanks, Kealan. I'm going to talk about a couple of schemes that are out there at the moment and there is some very strong demand on these and one of these is a trading online voucher. I suppose over the last number of weeks and I suppose indeed prior to that, over the last number of years, the local enterprise offices were pushing out this programme, the Trading Online Voucher Scheme. And before I suppose the COVID effects, this is running as a 50%, 50% matching fund scheme. What is it basically? It's a 2,500 voucher, a funding grant, a mini-grant to improve your business's e-commerce capabilities. Again, with COVID, the matching fund requirement on this has been reduced to 10%. But it does remain at 2,500 euros per voucher. A second application is also now possible under the scheme. And before people ask me the question, yes, you have to apply for the scheme if you are funded or if you're approved, you have to spend the money before the drawdown of the scheme itself. And we also have one other condition and that is that you attend a webinar, that you participate in a webinar and avail of the tips that are available from a highly qualified advisor in terms of social media strategy. And again, this is a scheme, sometimes it can be driven or pushed a little bit by web designers, which is a natural process. But we want to be ensured that the final beneficiaries of the scheme, which are the businesses themselves, are fully cognisant of what they're getting into and how they push forward with their applications. Thanks, Kealan. I'll also highlight the Enterprise Ireland Retail Online Scheme. Again, this is a scheme administered by Retail Ireland. Again, it focuses on some of the larger enterprises, again, employing 10 or more employees. The Trading Online Vouchers, I mentioned previously, focuses on the tenure list. With this scheme, it has substantial funding attached to it. Again, it is 10,000 to 40,000 euros in terms of the support available, up to 80% of the cost. And interestingly enough, salary costs are included in this. There's a very interesting webinar. It's on the Enterprise Ireland website. And again, it is worth just perusing that because it does provide the full information on the scheme itself. If people have any queries, they should go back and they should contact retail@enterpriseireland.com and the response is good and relatively quick. So you know, it is worth investigating. Have a look at the webinar on the Enterprise Ireland website and it will answer those questions that you have. The next report I'm going to talk about is Microfinance Ireland Loan Scheme. Again, this scheme has been enhanced also. Previously, the scheme would have had a 25,000 euro threshold. If a business can demonstrate an impact from COVID, 15% in profit, 15% in turnover, then the business can apply for a loan up to 50,000. And again, the loan terms typically up to three years. But interestingly enough, because we do get a lot of queries in terms of accessing credit lines, there is a six-month moratorium on the loan repayment and there's 0% interest for the first six months. Again, the interest rate is 4.5%. Businesses can apply outside of local enterprise office, they can apply directly to Microfinance Ireland, but there is a 5.5% charge on that. How does this process work? We work very closely with the businesses in pulling together the applications at the outset. We try and ensure that the documentation that is required to assess the loan is in place and this documentation would be common in terms of any loan application. You're looking at personal bank statements, you're looking at business bank statements, you're looking at, I suppose, maybe credit bureau checks and so on, again, which would have to go with the application. But we do provide some support and advice and mentor support around this at the outset. And if you are approved, obviously, Microfinance Ireland can come back to the local enterprise office and say, well, yes, we're approving this loan, but the applicant might require some additional support. And again, we can provide that support through our mentoring scheme. Again, the scheme has got very busy over the last couple of weeks, particularly with the opening up of the moratorium in terms of repayments and of course, the increase to 50,000. But remember what I was saying, it has to be that 15% COVID effect on your business in terms of profitability and in terms of turnover and that is critical. Thank you, Kealan. The next grant I'm just going to touch on, again, it is very much hot off the press at the moment, is what is known as a restart grant. And again, this relates to rates and rates are paid in 2019. It's a direct grantator between 2,000 and 10,000 based on the commercial rates. And again, the minimum is 2,000, maximum 10,000. And the business or the scheme applies to small business with a turnover of under 5 million and implying up to 50 people. Again, it has to be impacted by at least a 25% reduction in turnover out to June, 30 to June 2020. The scheme opens this coming Friday and it should be available on the Kerry County Council website. And again, it is open. Now, as I said, the scheme is just hot off the press. I suppose the various queries around it are currently being addressed, but it is moving forward as of Friday, the 22nd of May. I'm just going to touch on a couple of other schemes very briefly, again, because a lot of businesses raise those queries in terms of access to credit. I'm just going to touch on a couple of other schemes very briefly, again, because a lot of businesses raise those queries in terms of access to credit. And there's an important body out there known as the Strategic Banking Corporation of Ireland. And again, its website can be accessed through S B C I. And again, there are two schemes and I'm not going to go into these in a whole lot of detail, but you have a four hundred and fifty million Covid working capital scheme. Again, you can see the, the details around that in terms of no security for loans up to four hundred or up to five hundred thousand and three years at four percent interest rate. And you've the Covid nineteen future growth loan scheme. Again, what is my advice there? I am not going to go into details on them here, the information is available on the S B C I website. And these schemes are administered by the core banks, you're talking about Allied Irish Bank, Bank of Ireland and Ulster Bank. And certainly, the first questions should be raised with those banks in terms of accessing these schemes. Another scheme, again, Strategic Banking Corporation of Ireland, is a credit guarantee scheme. Again, there are businesses out there that don't, that can suffer barriers to lending. Again, through inadequate collateral or it might be a new business or a novel business idea or whatever. Again, there is this credit guarantee scheme out there, Strategic Banking Corporation of Ireland. Again, just go into the S B C I website and again, there is a lot of information, helpful information available there. Enterprise Ireland have a number of funds as well, but again, I suppose these would deal more with the manufacturing internationally traded services. Again, there's repayable, there's a sustaining enterprise fund which repayable grant of up to eight hundred thousand euros. But in order to qualify for these, all the Strategic Banking Corporation of Ireland avenues must be exhausted. I would assume that in many cases would say this, because it, it, it applies to manufacturing and internationally traded services, would, would not apply to retail sector, but, but it is a scheme that is there and could be worth investigating depending on where you are and if there's an element of manufacturing within your business. A good guide again, it's on the department website, the Department of Business, Enterprise and Innovation. Again, very good publication, it's an easy to read format, a simple format. It is updated regularly in terms of the changing supports because we do live in a, in a fluid and changing situation at the moment. But certainly, I'd advise people to go back and have a look at this because there is good information, but solid information available. I suppose on that, our local enterprise office, we're a unit within Kerry County Council. And again, we, we're working closely in terms of supporting the micro business sector, these are the businesses implying ten or less. I would just like to emphasize again, before I finish up, don't forget that helpline that is in place, eighteen hundred eight zero seven one zero two, business dot support at kerrycoco.ie. And certainly, that line is open, five days a week, nine to five. And if you have any issues or questions, do not hesitate to contact that team. Thank you.
Okay, good, good afternoon, folks. I just want to take you through, this is Jim Power here. I just want to take you through a quick run through on what's happening in the world of economics at the moment. As a small, open economy, I, the, the international perspective is always extremely important. So I will start there, I go onto the first slide, the, okay, the, when I sat back in early January, as I do every year, to look at the year ahead, we had just come out of a year twenty nineteen, we saw the lowest level of economic activity globally since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. A lot of that was down to Donald Trump and his trade war with China, which had a huge impact globally. Also, there was a lot of paralysis around this part of the world about the impact of Brexit and would or would not Britain fall out of the EU at the end of January, a hard Brexit, in other words. Then, when I sat down in early January, having come through all of that, my view was that the year ahead was looking a little bit better because number one, I believe Britain would avoid a hard exit from the EU. And secondly, and more importantly, I believe that ahead of a presidential election in November, that Donald Trump would become much more considerate towards the Chinese because the last thing he wanted ahead of that election was a significant US economic problem as a result of a trade dispute with China. So by the end of February, it was all working out to plan. Britain had avoided a hard Brexit, at least for the moment. Trump had reached a lot of agreement with China and we started to see those tariff barriers coming down. So we were set up for what was going to be looking like a reasonably good year then. And I suppose this demonstrates the hazards of economic forecasting at the best of times. We were hit with Covid nineteen, the global economy literally fell off the cliff with large swathes of it shut down because of, for health reasons. And the IMF recently suggested that this year would see the sharpest slowdown in economic activity since the nineteen twenties. The, and that, if you look at all of the economic data coming out, no surprises there, it's been an absolute collapse in activity. Important to point out, there has been an incredibly strong and an incredibly aggressive official policy response. Interest rates have been taken down to zero. Central banks around the world are engaging in massive quantitative easing or creating money supply. And now we're starting to see governments implement significant fiscal policy packages. And thankfully, the European Union has discarded the three percent budget deficit limit that prevails across the European Union. So in other words, the fiscal rules have been torn up and we're seeing globally policymakers effectively throwing the kitchen sink at the problem. So that's good because we didn't get that sort of aggressive coordinated response globally back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So it suggests that, you know, over the next eighteen months, the world economy will come back. I think we will look back and see that probably April and May of this year will represent the bottom of the cycle. The question, of course, is what's the recovery going to look like? And it's a difficult question to answer because it will depend on the path of the virus. We are seeing around the world and indeed, Ireland started to witness the first part of this earlier this week, a gradual opening up of economic activity. Obviously, the risk to that recovery and that opening up is that you get fresh outbreaks of the virus. And indeed, in parts of China at the moment, there have been fresh outbreaks. And what was going to have to happen in that instance, you come in, it's like putting out a fire. You quench it and you wait until the next one erupts, you then move in quickly and quench that again. So unfortunately, until a vaccine is developed, you know, the path to the virus will remain risky and dangerous. And I would say that from an Irish economic perspective, it is important to just understand that the global economy over the next eighteen months will be recovering, but that recovery is likely to be subpar or economies growing below potential. It'll be a couple of years until we see, I believe, a return to global economic normality. Moving on to the next slide, this is the latest forecast from the European Commission. I'm not going to bombard you with statistics today, but suffice to say that the European Commission believes significant declines, pretty unprecedented declines in economic activity everywhere. But then a reasonably strong rebound in two thousand and twenty one. I would hasten to add that the twenty one growth numbers are exaggerated by the fact that they're coming off a very low base in two thousand and twenty. But nevertheless, there is a general consensus that it's hard to disagree with that we're looking at the prospects of a gradual global recovery as the global economy is opened up over the next eighteen months. That provides of the whole way, of course, being that the virus behaves itself and we don't get significant fresh outbreaks. So moving on to the next slide, looking at the Irish situation. You know, the Irish economy has come through five incredibly good years. And the first couple of months of this year were stacking up to deliver another year of strong and solid economic growth. Then Covid nineteen hit and effectively since the middle of March, we've seen the Irish economy fall off a cliff. Regardless of what economic indicator you look at, it's, it's been absolutely catastrophic. Over well about one point two million people currently receiving some form of government employment support. And it is interesting that in January, February, we were worrying about the implications of an economy approaching full employment, labour scarcity, upward pressure on wages, et cetera, et cetera. And at that stage, we were with an unemployment rate of about four point eight percent. We're now approaching twenty five percent, so it just shows you how quickly things can change. The Irish government and Tomás has outlined some of the measures that have been implemented all around the country. But the Irish government is reacting quite aggressively to this. There's a lot of money being spent, number one, in supporting employees and number two, in, in trying to support businesses, keep businesses alive during the period of shutdown to make sure that they're around when the economy opens up, to pick up the baton and grow economic activity into the future. So the government has, with the permission of the European Union, exceeded the fact that we will have to accept significantly higher budget deficits over the next couple of years. And I think there is no choice about that. And the point, a really important point from my perspective is that unlike in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, this economic recession cannot be followed by a period of fiscal austerity. In other words, significantly higher taxes and cuts in government expenditure. Over the next couple of years, fiscal policy as in taxation and spending will have to be a supportive of economic activity as possible. Because at the end of the day, to me, it's essential that those businesses that are up and running at the end of February, that were viable businesses, will still be around when the economy starts to open up. Because without businesses, we will not regrow our tourism sector, we will not get recovery in the economy. So there's two elements to that business support essential. One is providing support to business during the period of lockdown because for many businesses, and it's now starting to dissipate as they open up, but for many businesses, particularly in the non grocery retail sector, in the hospitality sector as well, cash flow has died, but yet a lot of business expenses are still piling up. So the first period of serious attention is required during that period of shutdown. And then once businesses reopen, it would be naive to believe that business will return to normal anytime soon. You know, over the next eighteen to twenty four months, you are likely to see suboptimal levels of economic activity. And a key part of that is what David was talking about earlier on, the social distancing protocols will limit business volumes, there is no doubt about that. The good news for Ireland is that we are in a good place to borrow. The Irish government is borrowing aggressively to fund this, as indeed is every other government in the world at the moment. We are not unique, but the good thing is there is a marked willingness to lend money to Ireland at very, very low rates of interest. So we can effectively borrow at close to zero at the moment. That is very important and it stands out in marked contrast two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Another feature that offers hope in the slightly longer term is that, you know, a lot of people have income coming in over the last couple of years, or sorry, the last couple of months, I beg your pardon. But they're, whether it's from the state or from employment, there may be reductions in some cases. But we're getting a lot of income still flowing into the system. And of course, people do not have the ability to spend that money. So we're seeing a marked buildup of savings and it's estimated that savings at the end of this year could have increased by around twelve billion. So, okay, it's, if from an economic activity perspective, it's bad to see people saving rather than spending. But in the current circumstance, this is for saving. And at some stage, when people become confident enough, when the opportunity presents itself to start spending again, that money will start to find its way into the system. So it, it definitely offers potential for a reasonable rebound at some stage in the future. Economic recovery will come, you know, there's, there's no point turning around at this stage and rolling over and dying in a metaphorical sense, the economy will recover. The only doubt about that is it is going to be driven by medical and health fundamentals rather than by economic factors per se. And I really pity, you know, governments on one side of the equation at the moment and the health people led by Tony Houlihan on the other side. I mean, there, there's a very, very dangerous thin line to be drawn here, a balance to be kept between preserving the health of the nation and preserving the health of the economy. So it's a difficult trade off and that the health side of it is obviously very desired to run in a very conservative way, whereas the government and with responsibility for managing the economy would probably prefer to see a more aggressive opening up. But it, it will be, that's the balance that has to be struck over the next twelve, eighteen months. Because opening up the economy is not without risk, there's no doubt about that. Now, moving on to the next slide, looking at the sectoral impact, I call this the hierarchy of pain. And I don't include all sectors, but some of the main sectors in terms of pain. I mean, the tourism and travel sector definitely most vulnerable, which is incredibly important to the Kerry economy. But international travel has effectively died and it will take some time for people to recover their confidence and start flying again. And at the end of the day, last year, Ireland had ten point eight million overseas visitors into the country. Based on the first couple of months of this year, we were going to achieve a new record. But all of that has died and for this year and indeed, I think for next year, well, there'll be very few of any this year. But there won't be a dramatic recovery next year until a vaccine is developed. International travel, foreign visitors coming in will remain a significant deficit in our economy. The hospitality sector, pubs, restaurants, hotels, integral to the tourism sector, particularly important for the Kerry economy, have been shut down and the reopening of all of those businesses, you know, will be tricky, will be difficult. Non grocery retail, David has spoken about, you know, the implications there, the motor industry has taken a serious hit. It got reopened last Monday, which is important in terms of the July first car selling season. Construction forced to shut down, but I'd be less concerned about the construction sector because there is a lot of demand for construction delivery over the next couple of years, particularly in the area of housing. So it will recover pretty quickly. The not for profit sector, you know, all, all, all of those charities and not for profits that get a lot of money from various sponsorships are in serious trouble. I presume the tour of Kerry has been cancelled, I was due, and that's a major fundraiser for charity. I was due to participate in the Dublin City Marathon in October, that's been cancelled, another major fundraiser. So a lot of these fundraisers for the not for profit sector have been wiped out, so that's an issue. Agri food is doing pretty well out of this, manufacturing is doing well, particularly on the chemical and pharmaceutical side of the economy. Grocery retail is doing reasonably well, pharmacies are doing reasonably well. So that's the, the secret breakthrough of this, the opening up of all of these sectors, you know, it's going to be gradual. It's going to be challenging and as David has outlined, there will be expenses involved. Moving on to the next slide, this is the Department of Finance forecasts from a few weeks back. And it's pretty similar to that EU forecast I showed you earlier. You know, a dramatic collapse in activity this year, a reasonably strong rebound expected in two thousand and twenty one. But I hasten to add again, you know, those growth rates in two thousand and twenty one are exaggerated by the low base from which they come. But in any event, if at the end of two thousand and twenty one we're to look back and this sort of growth profile actually materialized, you know, it would be a reasonable outcome. And the chances are, this is what the recovery is going to look like. Moving on to the next slide and I'm, I'm almost finished. The long term impact, we will be left with a significant legacy of debt, we have to accept that, as, as does every country in the world. Global travel will be slow to regain confidence, social distancing protocols will limit business volumes and increase costs. The, the freedom of movement of people certainly will become a much bigger global issue. Food security and safety, I think there's good news here for the Irish agri food sector because I think as a country, as consumers, we now recognize the importance of having a secure, safe supply of food. We're seeing a massive migration to online. And the challenge I suppose is will people migrate back to bricks and mortar? So the hope is that they will, but it's also quite obvious that retailers, you know, and all businesses dealing with the consumer will have to will have to create a strong online presence into the future. Remote working becoming a bigger and bigger issue. It's working very well for most people. That, that will certainly have an impact on commercial property. And I actually think there's huge potential here for remote working hubs like the one in Trelly, for example, and Killorgan, which can have a significant, I think they can play a more significant role in the new economic model here. And my final point this slide is that it is absolutely essential that we do not allow economic crisis morphing into a banking crisis. Now, the final slide. In terms of supporting businesses, it's vital to protect business and support reemployment. It's vital to prevent a banking crisis. And I think businesses will have to work with their consumers in terms of debt management, there's going to have to be forbearance, there's going to have to be flexibility. Because at the end of all of this, over the next couple of years, the survival of business is absolutely essential. So thank you very much for your attention.
Thanks very much, Jim, for that and Tomás and David. We have about less than ten minutes left, so if anyone has any questions, can you please use the chat function to enter your questions and we'll do our best to answer them? We've had a few in over, over the call, I suppose. The restarting grant, as Tomás said, is hot off the press. The details are being worked out and it will be live on Friday. Our understanding at the moment is that, yes, it is linked to your commercial rates that were paid or that were ratable in two thousand and nineteen. One of the queries I've got in is if the rates, if there was no rates attached to their business, can the business still apply for the grant? At this moment, I don't believe so, but the details will be live on Friday on our website, Kerry Coco dot I E. So there'll be further updates at that stage. I've got another query in relation to, I suppose, the reopening costs. And if we're conscious that an awful lot of businesses will have reopening costs and they'll be reduced capacity in the stores like David had suggested there. The restarting grant will be able to cover some of those costs. And again, those details will be finalized and will be available on our website again on Friday. One of the other queries I've got in then is in relation to, I suppose, social media and digital marketing and the availability of webinars and training courses around that. I might ask my colleague Tomás Hayes to come in on that and just give some, some updates on that, if you don't mind, Tomás.
Yes, we're moving, thanks, Bridgette. Yes, we're moving ahead with a series of webinars. In the past, we'd have done a very popular, it's a digital marketing program. Basically, we've converted that into modules now and we'll be delivering those online as webinars. So that continues. And again, I'd emphasize that huge interest and like it has always been there in terms of the online marketing, digital marketing and so on. And again, based on the feedback and training needs analysis from, from our customers and clients, obviously, we will be continuing those and at the moment, they're free of charge.
Thanks, Tomás. I suppose I've had a query then in relation to the webinar itself. Yes, the webinar is currently being recorded and Kealan, our colleague in Retail Excellence Ireland, will, will send out the webinar later this evening to everyone. And it will be also available on our own website, Kerry Coco dot I E going forward as well. I suppose, look, a lot of the panelists have talked about the challenges and the opportunities with reopening your businesses. And as Kerry County Council, we're very mindful of the, the economic impact as a whole on the county. We recently published a report on Friday, I suppose outlining the stark reality of the Covid nineteen economic analysis on the county. And at the moment, based on the facts as they are at the moment, we're anticipating this probably a billion euro loss to the economy of Kerry in, in two thousand and twenty alone. As Jim highlighted, we're, we're, you know, a tourism county, where we've the highest employment in the country dependent on tourism in the county. And there's a lot of offshoots, both supply chains into the businesses and retailers that are dependent on it as well. So I suppose we would encourage you to contact the business support line on eighteen hundred eight zero seven one zero two to email business dot support at Kerry Coco dot I E. And I suppose to avail of the, the supports that are available through the local enterprise office as well. I suppose we're also conscious that there's a lot of our businesses have physical presences in our towns and villages throughout the county, both in the, in the regional towns and in the more peripheral areas of the county. And I suppose we're encouraging those businesses to look at the online, see, can they get some of their, their business online as well and have local support around that. And there's been, I suppose, a lot of work being carried out at the moment in relation to marketing the county, getting the county back up and open for business again. And as I say, as Tomás would have mentioned earlier, we are currently looking for businesses to register with Kerry County Council to say that they are open for business, the hours of opening, et cetera, so that there's a central repository for the county showing the different local businesses that are open within the county as well. And I've just got another query there into the, some of the tourism businesses and the BMVs. Again, the finer details of that will be, are being worked out this week. So look, we'll have more details on that on Friday. I'm not able to give an answer today, but again, the details will be available on Friday. And I might ask David to come in maybe just on a final note, just to kind of give maybe some pointers for, for moving forward as well. And I have Tomás also asking to come in, so I'll ask Tomás to come in afterwards.
Thanks, Bridgette. Well, okay, yeah, eighteen thousand stores nationally will reopen, reopen on the eighth of June. That's the big, big phase, obviously. So we, we will see customers come back into the high streets of Kerry. It's really important that we reassure everyone that they're safe. And I made the point again about appointment based shopping will be the way for lots of elderly or sick people who just are in a queue in, in high street. So we need to accommodate those people, customers as well. So look, we need to keep the faith, we've had some very dark days. But everything is imploding in front of us, you know, after twenty five years of leading Retail Excellence to see so many members in, in spare, it's, it's hard, it's really tough. But look, we're working with central government, we do believe there will be a recovery too coming. And as Jim mentioned, you know, as businesses open, we start to see data around how they're actually doing and they're, they're going to struggle a bit. And so we all need to work with each other and support one another. And again, just to finish off, to compliment Kerry County Council for hosting today and being there to support your, your rate payers, your business. So fair play to you and I look forward to coming down soon to enjoy a couple of pints and nice meal. Thanks.
Yeah, I suppose just add a comment there, you know, I think positivity is so important going forward. And life, life goes on, businesses adapt, businesses change, businesses see new opportunities as they go forward. And like, while we're talking about Covid nineteen and the various interventions here today, the standard supports, the standard grants are still out there. And certainly, if people are looking at developing their businesses, looking at, at growing their businesses, do not hesitate to come back and talk to us on that. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Tomás and, and David. Look, I suppose I, we don't seem to have any other queries coming in and I'm conscious it's three o'clock. And I suppose I want to give my, my, my thanks to David and Kealan and the team in Retail Excellence Ireland for joining us here on the call today. It's much appreciated and David has had several phone calls over the last few weeks from us. And also to Jim for joining us today, we're very grateful that we have you on the call. Again, outlining some stark figures, but I suppose back to Tomás's point. Look, we as Kerry County Council want to see our county reopening in a very safe manner. We want to see businesses supported in, in our county. And yes, there will be adjustments going forward as well. And Kerry County Council and the local enterprise office are here to help you with those supports as well. So on that note, I want to say thank you very much. It's a new way of doing business for us with all the webinars going on lately. But look, it's great to see so many participants from throughout the county. So thank you very much for joining us today. Again, the webinar will be available to you later today and it will also be available on our website. Thank you.